Good evening, and I would like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting, to the February the 7th, 2021 School Board Meeting. At this time, if you would please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Can folks proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening, and it's great to be here tonight, February the 7th, 2022, to the Madison County School Board Meeting. Welcome to our meeting. This School Board Meeting is officially called to order. The School Board Meeting is an advertised meeting held in the public, not a public meeting. We have a set advertised agenda that will be followed. Anyone wishing to address the board may do so during Public Input Section of the meeting. You will have three minutes to address the board. The sign-in sheet to speak during Public Input is on the table to the left as you enter the boardroom. Please sign in if you wish to speak. Our School Board Minutes are being recorded this evening by Ms. Bishop, Confidential Secretary and Secretary to the Superintendent. Board members present are Mr. Carroll, Ms. Bell, Ms. Gibson, Ms. Williamson, and myself, Bart Lawford. Our attorney is President, Mr. Reeves, and the Superintendent of Schools, Ms. Joseph. At this time, the meeting is called to order. Again, I'll welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Before we begin, I'm going to amend the agenda. Item 2.1, Panetta Public Address System Replacement, will now become 5.10. 2.1 will become 5.10 under individual consent. 2.2, MCHS Band Purchase, will now become 5.11 under individual consent. 2.3, Memorandum of Understanding with MCEA Peer Professional Substitute Pay, will now become 5.12 under individual consent. And 2.4, Memorandum of Understanding with MCEA Retention Pay, which is 2.4, will now become 5.13 under individual consent. So 5.10 is the Panetta Public Address System. 5.11 is the MCHS Band Purchase. 5.12, the Memorandum of Understanding with MCEA Peer Professional and Substitute Pay. And 5.13, the Memorandum of Understanding with the MCEA Over Retention Pay. Does anyone need any clarifications? Okay, if there's no clarifications, I will be pulling 5.3, the job description of the reading tutor. That will be pulled tonight, and we will be recognizing the Teachers of the Year at a later date. So 1.2 will also be at this time. That will be at a later date. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to sign? For, okay, we have some names here. Okay, the first name under Public Input is Tyresha Richardson? Tyreshia Richardson? If you'll go to the podium, please, and you will have three minutes. I think the minutes will appear on the screen.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Tyresha. Good evening. I came as a concerned parent within the community. When I first read in the newspaper that you all were considering moving Samantha Avery to the high school, I became very upset and started to wonder, why would you all even consider doing something as such? My child is 12, and I can't begin to imagine what kind of emotional havoc we would have with him thinking that he would have to go to the high school at an early age. Many of these children suffer from mental health issues. Have you all thought about that? The emotional stresses that children have already from just going to school and trying to make good grades. And now you mean to tell me you want to add more on them by sending them to the high school earlier when they are not ready? If money is the issue, close to other schools and send them to Central. I am sure that, I'm sure that they can house all of them, but that will cause many of the teachers to quit because Central is not where they want to work. Tell the truth. What is the real reason for the move?
Thank you, thank you for your comments and input. The next person on, that was agenda item, well, that's really not an agenda item. The next person is Shanika Mitchell.
Good evening. I come before you as a concerned parent and also an educator in the Madison County School District. I've taught many of the current sixth graders, and when I first heard of them being moved to the high school, the seventh and eighth graders, I didn't think it was a good idea. I know these students on a personal level, as I've built relationships with them over the years because I've taught them. And moving them to the high school at this point, it would be beneficial for them. They're merely babies and are way too impressionable, and with the many effects of such that we do not have control of affecting our children, this we do have control of. I'm afraid that this exposure would take away their youth way too soon. Have you really thought about the teachers not wanting to teach those seventh and eighth graders as they went to the high school seeking employment, not Central, to teach middle school students? And vice versa. Teachers at Central gain employment as middle school teachers, not high school teachers. I'm afraid that this is the wrong choice. Many teachers have even said they would seek employment elsewhere. We are in need of many teachers now, so just think about what this move would really do for us. And not only that, in talking with many of my coworkers, from fifth to sixth grade, it's more of a gradual, gradual release, because I taught third, fourth, and fifth grade. This year, I'm in first grade. In turning those children loose, going from fifth grade to sixth grade, it was hard. And they come to us, talking about how hard it was for them. So sending them to the high school, making them have to readjust to adapt to being with older children, I don't think that's a good move.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
The next person, Jasmine Warren.
Good evening. My name is Jasmine Warren, and I stand here before you as a teenage mom myself. I was exposed to people of higher maturity that made me think that I was capable of being an adult and had early decisions, had decisions at an early age. I have worked hard to make sure that my children had a better opportunity than I did, only for you to take the worst fears from them, to send my kids onto a higher environment, which much greater in this maturity level. Have you really stopped to think about the effects it would have on my kids or other students? Have you really thought about the maturity level of students? Have you thought about how it could possibly increase teenage pregnancy in Madison County? Have you really taken into consideration what it would do to our younger students, not only socially, but emotionally as well? It seems to me that we want the children of Madison County to fail and trying to make them grow up before their time. I'm standing here advocating for all the parents that are not able to be here tonight, those that are at work and sacrificing for themselves to make it better for their kids as well as mine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tyria Jones? Tyria Jones?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Tyriba Jones, and I have sixth grade at Madison County Central School. And we're adjusting to the Central School because she came from Panetta Elementary. And we are getting there, but if we're going to go from just going to middle school to straight into high school, I know it's going to be a problem, because she adjusting to the kids from other schools as well, but to put them with students that's much older, that will be 18 this month, and then you've got a 12-year-old or 11-year-old out there because their birthday is at the beginning of the year or at the end of the year. So it's going to be very hard, and I don't agree with sending them to the high school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next, Jamie Andrews.
Good evening. I know most of you all already personally. Mr. Alfred, I had the pleasure of teaching your niece at the academy. Ms. Gibson, I've welcomed you into my classroom home on many occasions. Ms. Bell, I had the pleasure of teaching with Brianna. Mr. Reeves, even, I taught both your daughters at the academy. So I know many of you, and Ms. Joseph, I do my very best to represent our district to the, the best of my ability each day, and for our kids. Let me introduce myself to those of you that do not know me. I'm a 23-year veteran teacher. In my career, I've been recognized by Ellen DeGeneres, WCTV, the Tallahassee Democrat, and most recently nominated for Life Changer of the Year Award. I'm a teacher mentor, a union representative, and I've helped district teachers fund about $18,000 of supplies this year alone through a Donors Choose Teacher Ambassador. I don't say this to brag on my accomplishments, but to show you the type of teacher we have at Central. I'm only one of the many talented teachers that we have at Madison County Central School. On any given day, you will see our teachers rushing to ballgames, not of their kids, but of their previous and current students, doing home visits to help students and families with needs of clothing and food, attending high school and college graduations. I've even seen some teachers supply their students with luggage when they're moving At the December meeting, you asked, what does Central need to be successful? But you didn't ask the teachers. I can tell you what we need. We need support. We need support of the families, our community, and most importantly, our school board. Not only do we need encouraging words, which recently seem to be few, but we also need to feel appreciated as far as what we give, because an appreciated employee will almost always do more than what's expected. So please, in saying this, several of us this year are making less than we made last year because of insurance increases and, of course, inflation. But you've also, to this point, due to bargaining, withheld the step. So as you show us your appreciation, please don't take our step away. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, at this time, we're going to the consent items for review. Under Consent Items, 4.1, the Minutes from the January the 18th, 2022 meeting. Consent Item 4.2, the Fire Inspection Report, and it has listed the deficiencies at each school under the input. And 4.3 is the fundraisers. At Madison County Central School, you have the PBTS, online to order a variety of things. It's from February the 7th, 2022 through 5/20/2022. Items would be for the PBIS store. At MCCS Baseball, it's a hit-a-thon on 2/7 through 2/11. The purpose is for New Jersey's hats and belts. And those are the consent items under the consent items. Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
I move to approve the consent items.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. Is there a second?
I second it.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Ms. Bell. All those, is there any discussion?
On the, on the fire report, the things that, the deficiencies, has all of them been corrected.
All of them have not been corrected. It's a work in progress.
Okay.
I think the ones that's been corrected is noted on the.
Right, 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 right. Okay.
Is there any other discussion concerning the, the fire report? Any other discussion? If there is no other discussion, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the consent items. Okay, 5.1, 5.1 Personnel Changes. Mr. Killensworth?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have four names this evening that we bring before you for recommendation. One of them is a lateral transfer. Then we also have three names of people who will be resigning, and then three that are taking leave of absence that you have. Also have seven names that we're adding to the after-school tutoring that I ask that be approved.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the personnel changes?
I made the motion to approve the personnel changes.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Bell. Is there a second?
I have one question. On the secretary, is that just a bilateral move?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, it's just a lateral.
Because that doesn't usually come if it's just.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Bell. Is there a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Carroll. Any further discussion? If there's none, all those in favor, show a hand. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the personnel changes. The next section, after-school tutors, or was, did you include that in the, was that included in the personnel?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But I mean, I can pull it out, and we can do it individually if you.
Was that in your motion, Ms. Bell?
I just approved the personnel changes.
Well, that's under the, I mean, it's under.
It's under everything.
Mr. Reeves, do you think we should vote on it separately?
It's a separate item on the agenda.
No, no, the volunteers is the next one.
I think it depends on what the motion was. I think if Ms. Bell said she did not intend to approve that, then yeah, you don't have a.
No, I would say it was within the.
Oh, you said you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No.
That's, that's what I understood. I mean, I took it as that also. 5.2, Mr. Killensworth, School Volunteers.
Yes, sir, we have four names that we are bringing before you this evening for volunteers.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the school volunteer list?
I'll make the motion to approve the school volunteers.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gibson. Is there any further discussion? There's no further discussion. All those in favor of the volunteers, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the school volunteers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Killensworth. The next item is with Regions Bank, Ms. Rose. We've gone through a lot to get to this point.
Well, I think that you have in front of you the contract, and what I did was I took all of the concerns that the attorney had, and I either struck them out or changed the language exactly how it was. So it now is looking at you how it was asked to be changed. So I would recommend that we move forward with that.
Okay, Mr. Reeves, do you feel comfortable with the contract?
Change it exactly the way I ask.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the Regions Bank Card Contract Commercial Card Agreement?
I move to approve the Regions Bank Commercial Card Agreement.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Williamson. Any discussion? There's no discussion, all those in favor of the Regions Bank Commercial Card Agreement, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the Regions Bank Commercial Card Agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Okay, item 5.5, the IT Contract. Mr. Goyet?
Yes, this is a blanket contract that we use for temporary contractors to come in and assist us. It's been to the board before, but that was last fiscal year, so we're getting ready to do some more contract work, so we wanted to bring it back to you. Basically, we're, we're having trouble finding employees. I've had open positions since almost the beginning of the year, so we're looking to bring in a couple of people to help us get caught up on some projects.
You just want us to approve the template?
Yep.
When you actually hire somebody, this would come back for approval by the board?
Just the names will come back.
Yeah, and there's, there's two.
We have two names there now.
There are two names on the board.
So we need to approve the names and the template.
Yep.
Well, where are the names? Do they get in it?
Yeah, the two names are Carolyn Thigpen and Joshua Welch are the two names.
They're, they're listed on the actual memo part of the board docs, and then just, yeah.
So is there a motion to approve the contract with Carolyn Thigpen and Joshua Welch and the contract, contract template?
I move to approve the contract template for the IT, for the contractors, and Carolyn Welch and.
Carolyn Thigpen.
Carolyn Thigpen and.
Joshua Welch.
Joshua Welch, okay.
And then the period of time, Mr. Goyet, the rest of this school year?
Yeah, we wouldn't go past the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bell. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the IT contractors.
Thank you.
Okay, 5.6 is the student field trips. Okay.
I've got quite a few student field trips. You want to do them?
I can. I mean, I have them written out. The High School High Tech will be going to Top Golf in Jacksonville on 2/18/2022, five students, two chaperones. MCHS Concert Band will travel to Tallahassee on 3/3/22 to Leon High School for FBA Concert Judging from 12 to 7:00 p.m., 41 students and three chaperones. The MCHS Jazz Ensemble on April the 21st, 22, will travel to ABAC at 9:30 a.m. and will return 9:30 p.m., and it's 14 students for judging in a jazz where they're being critiqued and made recommendations. To the High School High Tech will travel to Orlando Disney, April the 20th through the 22nd, 10 students, three chaperones. It will be a behind-the-scenes tour of Disney for the students. The MCHS English III Fourth Period will travel to the Florida Holocaust Museum in St. Petersburg, 25 students, three chaperones. It is paid by the Holocaust Resource Council for their, there will be taken in a net bus, and the students are paying the other part. And the last one, the FFA to the Florida State Fair in Tampa, February the 11th through the 12th, 2022, four students and one chaperone. It's the state semifinals in livestock judging.
We've had to add some more since that. Since then, the finals for the girls' weightlifting has come up, and that's going to be on the 11th, and we won't be meeting again, so I added it to the agenda. So we've got one girl going to the state for girls' weightlifting on the 11th, and they're going to be using a van. Also, since then, we've had science fair finals, our regional science fair. That's going to be on February 17th and 18th in Lake City, and that's two days they'll be commuting back and forth. And on March 8th, the High School High Tech will also be going to Tallahassee. Those are all the field trips.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the field trips?
I'll make the motion to approve the student field trips.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion? There's no discussion, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the field trips. It's a lot, lot of going. Okay, the next section we have is the update on iReady scores by Ms. Hill.
for our mid-year. What, what you're looking at there are if, if the students are in red, that's the percentage of students that if it's shaded here, it's three or more grade levels behind. We do have 7% in the district that scored three or more grade levels behind. We had 14% that scored two or more grade levels behind. Then we moved up to 41% that scored one grade level below where they should be, 21% that scored on grade level, and 18% that scored above. Twenty-one percent that scored on grade level and eighteen percent that scored above grade level. And so the report does break it down for us so that we can see the different areas that we have to work on. Phonological awareness, our students are doing actually very well in that area. Phonics, not as well. So that's an area that, that we are definitely working on. We use a program in the district called, boy, I just slipped my mind just that quick. Saxon phonics that is, is designed to work on those phonics skills for the students. And so we are, we are working really hard to try to get our students up to where they need to be. High frequency words was our, our second to the highest category. And you can see that we're, the students are actually doing very well in that category. Vocabulary and comprehension are pretty close to the same in those areas. We, we definitely have some, some room for improvement in those areas. You can see that when it comes down to the red, that those are the areas that, that have the highest number of students who are two or more grade levels behind. And so we are definitely trying to work on those areas. In our wonders program, we are, we are hitting those areas very hard. That's where a lot of our core instruction is, is taking place. And so this just kind of gives you the overall performance of the students. And so while we do see we have some areas where we really need to, to grow because we really need the students in green for them to show that they are level three or higher on the FSA when they get there. And so where, when you look at the number of students, you can see that while this is, you know, this percentage here is twenty-one percent that are two or more grade levels behind. That's a total of fifty-nine students. So that's fifty-nine students that are drastically behind where they need to be in reading. And so, and that's, that's K to, K to five. And so it's, you know, I would say per grade level, you could break that down, you know, to maybe ten students per grade level. But it's still that, those are students that we are spending a lot of time on in our response to intervention. They are getting more intervention than even what the state requires. Do you have questions for me on that?
Do we have, of course, I know I've been teaching a long time, but as far as the parents go, I'm going to go back to that. Because are they aware that their child is behind and what they need?
We, we have, yes, ma'am, we have sent home reports. And we actually, in K to five, we send them home. We don't mail them. We send them with the student with report cards. Because we feel like we have a better chance of them getting there. And then these students who are two or more grade levels behind, we have had sit team meetings with all of them.
With, with the parents?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for the, for the ones who are two and more and three and more, especially the three and more. If, at what point with the RTI, if they're not responding, how long does that play out and at what point do we refer to ESE for testing? Because, I mean, that's a huge flag if you have, if you're three or more grade levels below where you should be and you're in the fifth grade and you're functioning on first grade.
Right. The, the way that's supposed to work is we are supposed to do, we're supposed to provide interventions. We do it in a six-week cycle. It's the way our plan is written. That is, that is something the schools would have to verify, but our plan is written so that we are supposed to come back after six weeks, sometimes nine weeks, depending on the particular situation, and determine if those interventions are working. If they are not, then we have to go through a whole nother cycle of different interventions. And so usually, we are talking a minimum of twelve weeks of documentation of different interventions that are being tried. And I wish Ms. Ritchie were here so she, she could answer your question better.
You need so many data points, but at what point, if you're, if you're looking at these fifty-nine students who are three or more grade levels below, at what point do we just keep doing RTI over and over? Or at what point do we say, okay, this is enough RTI, we need to test them?
Well, I, I will tell you that there are a large number of those that are already ESE.
Okay.
So these numbers include ESE?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, these numbers include our, our ESE students. And so.
But it would still be interesting to know how many are extrapolated out there who are not ESE.
Okay, I can get that for you.
Who are still in that. Because it's, it's a huge disservice if you have a student go along and then suddenly in the fourth or fifth grade, they turn up IND. And we've been playing this game for the last four years and it's just a huge disservice to the student. But I would like to see the number extrapolated from the fifty-nine who are, who are not currently ESE and in the RTI process.
I will, I will definitely get that for you. And I'll get that from, from Ms. Ritchie.
And even with the two or more, because two or more grade levels below, that's, that's hard to catch them up.
Right.
Past, past the fourth grade. I mean, you may can catch them up in first or second, but by fourth or fifth grade, if you're two or more grade levels behind, or three especially, you're, it's, it's a hard situation.
Yes, I, I absolutely agree. And, and that is, we, we've tried to set our, our system up where we are, those students who are that far behind are, we start the year doing sit meetings on them. And so I know that, that we have been working really hard on getting that RTI process refined so that, and, and I know it's, I know teachers get frustrated with all the documentation because it requires a lot of documentation. And so I know they get frustrated at times with all the documentation that we're having to do. But that's so that we have what we need for the state when we're audited on why we placed kids and why we tested kids. Because it, it's definitely, the state does, they, the state feels like we have tested way too many students across the state. And so, you know, they, they, in districts where there are a large percentage of ESE students, they really come in and look at our data and want to see, okay, well, where, where are, where's the documentation that various interventions were used? And so that's, we, we have to, to monitor that very carefully and make sure that we have all of that before we recommend the students for testing.
Back, and, and I understand what you're saying, but I just think that a lot of kids are, are missed or fall through the cracks, so to speak. Because back twenty years ago, we, in, in the district, we did a district-wide, all the kindergarteners, speech and language were screened. And that's how we identified the language impaired back then. They no longer do that. It was stopped probably ten, fifteen years ago. It was stopped. But again, it's just fearful in knowing what our numbers were back then, that people have slid through the cracks. Because by this point, we would be, you would be having parents that were in the district at that time who maybe had learning differences and maybe they're students now. And it's just, it's just, it's unfortunate that we have third and fourth graders showing up in third or fourth grade who are language impaired and we hadn't picked up on it sooner where interventions may could have been provided. That's the unfortunate part.
Do you know why that was stopped?
I guess they were saying over identification, but.
The state said we were over identifying.
Oh, that came from the state.
But again, it's, it's one way to, to put some red flags on kindergartners or even first graders coming in that there is a problem. And not wait to say third or fourth grade and suddenly they're language impaired and they can't say they are.
Right.
And it's just determined at that point.
Right. Well, I know that, I, one of the reasons we added another MTSS specialist for the Central School this year was just the, the MTSS specialist not having time to come back every six to nine weeks to do the follow-up meetings. And so this year, we have been much more successful at having those follow-up meetings like we're supposed to. And, and the, you know, the MTSS people over the past couple of years at Central were, were screaming, I can't, there's too many, there's too much. I, I can't get to all of them. And so, you know, we're better able to do that this year, having two people because one focuses on kindergarten through, I think, fourth grade? Fourth grade. And then the other one focuses on fifth through eighth. And, and they are, they're able to better, you know, monitor, make sure that the interventions are being done and they come back and they meet on them to make the determination on what to do next, that whole problem solving process.
So the teachers do the interventions or the MTSS person?
No, the, the teachers do. But then they have to come back and meet together with the MTSS person to determine if those interventions are working. So you guys want to go ahead and go to math? Okay, so these are the, this is what the math data looks like. For three or more grade levels behind, it's only five percent, which is good. And for the two or more years behind, you know, you, the twelve percent and then your five percent makes a total of seventeen percent. We have a lot more students in the category of one grade level behind. For being on grade level or above grade level, you've got sixteen percent and eleven percent above grade level. And so the four areas that are targeted are numbers and operations, which our students do the best on in terms of having less of them behind. The algebra and algebraic thinking, we have more students who actually scored on grade level or above, but also more students who scored below. And so that just means that there's less in the one year behind category. Measurement and data and geometry are the other two areas. And they are the two areas where we have the most students behind. And so those are areas that, that we're trying to work on. I will say that, you know, last year, we used the Florida Virtual School online curriculum because we knew we were going to have a lot of students out. We knew that we were going to have, last year was just going to be a very fluid year. Our principals feel like the students did not make as much progress using that program. Nothing against that program, but it, it is an online curriculum. We feel like that from the beginning of the year until now, the students are making good progress. But they were starting in a deficiency. Not only because of the curriculum being different last year, but also because so many of them were just out of school so much last year. And so there's, there's been a lot of ground to make up this year. And so I can, I should have pulled up for the reading, but these are the math, what the math looks like across the district with Greenville Elementary School, Lee Elementary, Madison County Central and Panetta Elementary. And you can just see the, the different colors there with how those students are doing in math.
How, how are these scores? What is K-12 Lift saying about?
K-12 Lift is, so what that does is it compares, instead of looking at the scores using just cut scores, it compares how our students are doing to how students are doing across the nation. And, and what we are seeing is we are seeing growth. But we're seeing that our students overall are not growing as fast as students across the nation. And so we just, in January, we had data chats, I guess you would call them, with teachers. And they are, they've looked at how, compared how their students, how fast their students are growing compared to, you know, the rest of the nation. And they're making plans on how to get our students to grow in faster, to catch up with the, the rate that all of their peers are growing. And so one of the things we like about K-12 Lift is it, it is, it is not just based off of one company's determination that growth is occurring. Because it's norm referenced, it, you get to see how our students are doing compared to all the students in their grade level across the nation. And so that's a real eye-opener to see, are our students growing? Are they learning at the same rate as everybody else? And so, and, and we have some, some areas where they are growing as fast as everybody else. But we have some areas where they're not. And so if you would like, I can bring K-12 data to the next meeting and I can share that with you.
But I mean, you're saying compared to the United, everyone in the United States, right? I mean, wouldn't they have different programs and different expectations and different?
They do.
Or, don't they?
Each state is different.
Yeah.
And so, but so what we have to, what we have to look at though is if those students are growing faster, if they're learning more. And Florida's education program is supposed to be stronger, then what's, are we really? And so, you know, I, I do wish we could look at it statewide, but that's not how they give us the data. It is just peers, you know, across the, the nation.
Well, it's, it's interesting to see that information.
It is. I'll have the K-12 data for you. As a matter of fact, I can email you that. And then if you have any questions, you're welcome to, to give me a call. Thank you.
Because base, we went, Ms. Gibson and I went to the legislative, or not legislative, the day in the legislature last Thursday. And some of the bills that are out there, one of them is increasing the test, the cut scores of what's going to be A, B, or A, B, C, like with your scores, like raising the bar. So again.
Well, and what's gonna, what's, probably what you're also hearing is about the new progress monitoring.
Right.
That the state is going to be doing. And what, what that's going to do is they're going to take a, a system kind of like this right here with iReady. And the students are going to take a baseline, a mid-year and an end of year. And we'll be able to see how the students are progressing during the year based on the best standards. And so how that's going to look, we're not really sure. The state hasn't given us that information yet. But it is a, it's more of a progress monitoring, not just test at the end of the year. But what that's going to do is give us test data, starting in pre-K, going all the way up to high school. And so our school grade is eventually going to change to include pre-K through, you know, all the grade levels at each school site. And so that's going to change the school grading system drastically because, you know, now it starts at. know, now, it starts at third grade, but in a couple of years, it's going to go all the way back to pre-K.
So, just as much pressure is going to be on K-1 and 2 that's on third, fourth, and fifth?
Yes.
Sixth and eighth to?
Yes.
To make the gains and?
Yep.
Have, and, and again, from what we sat in, it sounded as if just the whole grading system was going, was going to be ramped up because the number of As that were given out and Bs is, yeah, the configuration and all that's still like up for, they're still trying to work it out. The chancellor has, was in several of the things we were at, and he's one of the main ones that's sitting on this one that's discussing, um, testing and what's going to come about with that. So, it's interesting to, to see, but at the end of the day, we need to do all we can to have people the most prepared, because it's only going to become more complex. I don't know that they're going to make it any easier for anyone, just because we're doing progress monitoring, it's not going, the rigor is going to be hyped up, I'm afraid.
Well, just in, including pre-K, kindergarten first and second, in what's going to be considered state testing, i- is already a huge, um, change, and, and the pressure's going to be on everyone.
Right. No, um, thank you for this, and I would like to see the 12, K-12 Lift, I don't know if the others would, but?
I'd like to see.
I would like, I mean, I think it's interesting for us to know.
I, I'll be glad to email, and if you want a presentation on it, uh, at the next meeting, I'll be glad to do that, or if you just have questions that you want to, um, call me and ask me about?
We can start with that first, and then if we have questions, we can have a presentation.
Okay.
If that's okay with you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Um, the next item, 5.8, is the pro-share, um, contingent insurance premium. Ms. Joseph or Ms.?
Ms. Rayneck.
Rayneck? Not delivering good news.
No, it's not.
Sort of bad news.
It's not exactly good news, but it's what we were expecting at the beginning of the year when we talked to you about the health insurance going up and how the district share is going to be going up. So, this is the other piece of it that takes it from the 95% coverage to the 100% so that we don't get hit at the end of the year with another huge, uh, thing. Hopefully, this will be the last one we'll see this year.
And, and the total is?
About 110,000.
$10,000 and $200.
Yes.
And last year, $108,000.
Yep. That was the additional piece that was added last year. So, we expected that same amount this year coming to us.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot of money that we're having to?
It's a lot of money.
Fork over.
It's a lot of money, yes.
But the insurance company did hear you, uh, and they are looking at some, uh, looking at some additional, uh, some other insurance avenues for insurance, so they are bidding it out.
At, at, so after they bid it out, at what point can we maybe come out of the pro-share? Because I, I don't know that we could keep?
I'm, uh, yeah, I'm not quite sure about that. I think, I think it all depends on how those bids shake out, um, but we did insist that they go out for bids, because it is getting, and it's not just us, it's, it's all over the state. In fact, there's been articles that have been written about how they're going to be checking into Florida, why Florida's health costs have been going up so drastically. So, it's, it's a statewide issue, and it's being looked at from the nationwide to, to, as well, so.
I mean, it's not really an issue if we're getting back money, but gracious, for us to keep having to pay over $100,000 for the last two consecutive years, that's a lot of money.
Now, does this go back to our premiums, or the, um?
The, the way we had our premiums set up before was, we kind of took a risk, and we only paid 95% of it, and we were hoping that the claims would be down, but the claims have gone up drastically, not just the number of claims, but the amount of the claims.
That's what I was thinking, the claims.
Yes, so the claims are driving the, the raise in, in the pricing. So, i- in order to try and mitigate that, we said, "Okay, then we'll pay the 100% and take that risk off of there," but we're still seeing some very, very large claims.
Right.
And anytime any, any person is affected by any, anything like cancer, the claim goes up dramatically. And it might be just a few people, but the claims are what drives the rate.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve the, um, $110,000 or $200 Blue Cross Blue Shield?
I move to approve the pro-share contingent insurance premium of 110,200.
Okay, it's been properly moved, Ms. Gibson. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Mr. Carroll. Um, any discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, all those in favor of the pro-share contingent insurance premium, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval. Okay, um, 5.9, um, supplements. I think we have one, um, supplement that's been added, um, for the high school, for Jarrett Wood, for a flag football assistant coach, effective January the 25th, 2022, for the total of $1,688. Is there a motion to approve the supplement?
I move to approve that supplement.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bell, is there any discussion?
Was this a vacant position that just?
Undoubtedly.
Um, they did not fill it at the beginning of the year, and since it didn't start this semester, sometimes they wait until they find someone to do it.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, if none, all those in favor of, um, the supplement, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the supplement. Okay, um, 5.10 is, um, the Pinetta Public Address System. Um, Mr. Goyette?
Uh, yeah, the public address system at Pinetta, uh, is broken, it's, um, I'm not exactly sure how old it is, at least 20 years, believe it was put in when they?
Maybe 50.
Yeah, maybe, I believe it was put in when they renovated the school, but it might have been, might be, have been there before that. Um, and, uh, it's gotten to the point where it's more expensive to repair it than it is to replace it. Uh, so, we're going to replace it, uh, building on the same, uh, infrastructure that we run, um, the central school and the high school with. So, the system, uh, there's multiple parts to it, but the whole total project won't exceed $14,939. I'm still negotiating the labor rate some, so I'm hoping to get a little better labor rate, but that's the, the maximum cost.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the Pinetta Public Address System?
I move to approve the Pinetta Public Address System replacement.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Carroll. Any discussion?
I'm glad they're doing it, because they need it.
Well, I don't know that you can get by without having it with lockdowns, and you have to have a way to get to the whole campus, so I don't know that we have a choice, really. Is there any further discussion? If there's not, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the public address system at Pinetta. Okay, um, 5.11, um, the MCHS band purchase, and, um, I can go over if you like, Ms. Rose. Um, at the last board meeting, um, the board approved a purchase of drums from Music Masters for the high school for $10,700. The board agreed to pay half of the purchase price, and the band's internal accounts agreed to pay the other half. Since then, the band director has requested that cases and stands be added, and the drums be purchased from a different vendor, O'Malley's Musical Instruments in Georgia. The new purchase is for $12,942, making the district share go from 5,5,035 to 6,476. And I think the reasoning behind it is, um, the cases do help protect the drums, and these drums, I think, were drums that were back during, when Mr. Reeves and I were in the band. So, that was in the 80s.
Good old days.
Yeah, that they were purchased, so I think they've lived their life at the high school, but that's what I, I think his thought process maybe behind the drum cases would be, that it would protect the drums and add longevity to them and decrease the risk of having heads busted, or, or the drums may be injured, especially in, not necessarily injured, but destroyed in travel. I think that's where you would have to worry with it, not so much at the school site, but when they go to football games, or parades, or competitions on the bus, um, or the U-Haul banging around, where you run into the, to the trouble with it, but that's what they, um, Ms. Rayneck had asked me about it, I didn't feel comfortable, so I wanted to bring it back to the board to, um, have everyone to decide what to do. So, um, at this time, everyone can decide what we want to do, but I, I think that's the reasoning why the cases were added, and the amount maybe is different now. Is there a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to do it.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Williamson. Um, any discussion? Um, if there is no discussion, all those in favor, I'm showing a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the drum purchases at Madison County High School for their band. Okay, um, 2.3 is a memorandum of understanding with MCEA, um, paraprofessional and substitute pay. Uh, Mr. Killensworth.
Okay, um, didn't know it was me, but, on that, that's just basically covering where the para is filling in for 10 or more days, assuming the duties of the, the, uh, teacher and lesson planning and, and all of the duties that, uh, that'll be taken.
And they will be given an additional $5 per hour?
Yes, sir, during, during the duration of that time period.
And it's retro through, um, retroactive to August the 1st, 2021, so I guess that they started the school year and they're still in the position.
Yes, sir, because some of the needs that we have, I mean, they, they have gone above and beyond to help us and to fill these spots, and it's, it's only right to do that.
No, I, I agree. It's, what, I mean, how many do we have that are in this?
Now, I would say probably less than 10.
Less throughout the district?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
I mean, there's, there's not a huge amount of them, but those that are doing it, we do need to compensate them.
What, what grade levels are we seeing this in, uh, uppers or lowers or all across?
It can run the gamut, but mainly lower.
Elementary. Wow.
How long have some of them been doing this?
Since day one.
Some have, uh, been there pretty much the whole time, almost. Couple, very few, but, I mean, there's a few.
And you know, I mean, the sad thing about this is, um, having, having been on the board the amount of time I've been on it, this is the most we've ever paid teachers in the history of the Madison County School Board.
Definitely.
I remember when beginning teachers were 29,000, and, and it's, it's really scary in the state of where we're at with teachers coming out of teaching colleges, um, for us not to be able to staff all the classrooms, because I, I never remember us having this amount of people who were, are not teachers in the class. Do you, Ms. Reeves?
No, most vacancies, I think.
Yeah, and that's?
I'd say the highest beginning.
The, the highest pay that we've ever offered with benefits to not be able to attract.
You're, you're correct, and, I mean, I remember back when it was 18.
Right.
Trust me, I got that. Uh, but there has been a number of things that probably has impacted teaching in general, uh, from then till now, as to, you know, the requirements, expectations, the pressure.
You just don't have people graduating from college with a degree.
No, and they're not, we're not having as many going into that field. Now that the governor and all have thrown a little more money that way, it'll start swaying some back, but, I mean, that's not an overnight fix. So, you, still, we're looking probably two to three years out.
Well, I, I don't, I'm, I, I don't, I'm hopeful, but when you're, when you're having major colleges like the University of Florida, having so few people in the education field, that's, that's a scary sign when we don't, we no longer have St. Leo here for teachers. Um, again, you, I'm sure the numbers at FSU has decreased at BSU, it's just you don't have students going into that major. Um, and, I mean, that's the unfortunate, and, and what we're, what we're having is people who are not teacher-trained, that are coming with degrees and, um, business or what have you, that are looking for a job and, and we're trying to make it work. But, again, I'm just making the point, over 20 years, I've never seen this many people for us to be paying what we're paying to not be able to find teachers.
I agree.
I mean, that's?
But that is across, uh, across the state, whether it's Madison County or Marion County.
Right, no, no, I, I agree, I agree, and some districts, keep in mind, are paying a lot more than we're paying with start and beginning. I mean, if you were to pull up in Leon County right now, Leon County has vacancies, I'm sure all the, all the schools around us have it, but I'm just saying, based upon historical data, we're paying the most to have as many openings as we have.
That's true.
Usually, at the beginning of the school year, we were filled, all positions were filled.
With, with teachers.
With teachers. Um, but again, it's just the sign of the times we're in, and it's somewhat scary, because you don't know where it's going with, with what, but with that being said, is there a motion to approve, um, the memorandum of understanding with MCEA for paraprofessional and substitute pay?
I'll make the motion to approve the pay, because I think that anybody that steps up to do some other job to help us with our children's stuff deserves it.
They are appreciated.
I, I think they deserve it also.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson, any discussion? I, I too agree they deserve it, I mean, if, if someone is having to send home dojos to parents and listen to parents complain the whole night about stuff and answer the dojos, then they deserve more than pay as a parapro. If they're having to do lesson plans, keep up with kids, um, they deserve what they're, I mean, they deserve what we can pay them, and that's, that's a lot of additional work that, um, I don't want to take advantage of anyone and, and not give them what they need for doing what they're doing. Okay, so, all those in favor, show a hand. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval. Okay, item 5.13 is memorandum of understanding with MCEA concerning retention pay, and, um, that is, just trying to get it pulled up here. Um, do you want to go over that, Mr. Killensworth, or do you want me to read what the language reflects?
Uh, the, the short version on that is, that is, uh, basically the $1,000, correct me if I'm wrong, um, that is going to go for all employees within our district that did not receive the governor's $1,000, who has worked from a given date till now, or whenever y'all approved, which would be now.
It was, um, were employed as of June the 2nd, 2021 through now.
Correct. Absolutely. So, that way, I mean, it, it, there are a, a large number of employees that didn't fit the bill, uh, that, uh, the governor gave, which we appreciate him giving, but they're no less worthy than, than the ones who got it. So, this, again, is another way of, uh, trying to compensate our employees, to help them and, and let them see the appreciation that we do value, what they have done and, and what they do do for our district.
Right, and I want to, I like what you just said. Uh, we don't have to do this, this is something the board is doing.
Correct.
This is to show our appreciation to the teachers, the teachers are appreciated, and for those who think they aren't, this is a prime example of it right here.
Yeah, not only teachers, but non-institutional, everyone.
It's not just teachers, it's all learned.
Well, not teachers, this is going to be all across the board.
Right.
That is, I, I'm, I'm happy to do this.
Thank y'all.
Okay, is there?
As long as they get the 3-2 or 5-0.
To what now?
I said, as long as they get the 3-2 or the 5-0, I'm happy to. Preferably 5-0. I said, as long as they get the 3.2 or the 5.0, I'm happy to. Preferably 5.0.
Okay, is there a motion to, is there a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with MCEA over retention pay?
I vote to approve it.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bell. Any discussion? If there is no discussion, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval.
Thank you. I'll be sure to let them know that and they will appreciate it. Thank
Okay, I think that may be the end of the individual consideration items. The next item is superintendent items.
Okay, Mr. Carroll, I have several things. The first thing, I just need to remind everybody that Ivan Johnson is a longtime supervisor of transportation guy. Ivan Johnson was hired as a bus driver for the district on January 5th, 1999. Ivan drove the bus from 1999 until July 27, 2003. He became transportation foreman on July 28, 2003, and then became transportation specialist on July 1st, 2004. And in 2005, he became supervisor of transportation. Okay, Ivan Johnson has been, was employed by Madison County School District for a total of 21 After the onset of COVID, the board made the rule that we would stop lending, renting out our facilities for, for community activities. But his family is asking for you to make an exception because he is a, a member of our staff and he is, and so they want to use the GM at the central school for the funeral. And only because he is a member of our staff. So we're not asking you to change the rules, but make an exception because he's a, he's a staff member. The funeral will be Saturday.
At 11:00.
At 11 o'clock.
I think that we should do this. I mean, this is an active, he was an active employee for us right up until pretty much now. And that's a little different than just general
I'm good with that too, though. I mean, I think he's earned that and more, cause he's done a lot for our kids over the years I've known him.
Yeah, that's a long time to, I didn't realize he had been the supervisor of transportation since '05. That's a long time to be in that position. And that's, that's a position that without someone in there really strong can make the life of the superintendent miserable.
That is not an 8 o'clock to 4 o'clock position, okay?
Right, that is 24 hour-
All the time, not in 24 hours, seven days a week.
Cause I've had many instances where people would call me at home, saying their child's missing, and I would have to call Ivan to like, for him to try to locate it. I mean, I, I don't, I don't have a, I mean, there's no way I can locate a missing child at 5 o'clock in the afternoon at my home. But Ivan was constantly on call, having to take that. So again, I-
It's bad night, you know?
Right, right.
When the bus got stolen and they, I guess, was trying to go to Perry or maybe down to see Frankie, cause they were down there. And he had to go at 2 o'clock in the morning to retrieve the bus. I mean, it's, all kinds of things come up.
Didn't he do a lot of driving?
Yes.
That's what I'm thinking. He drove almost every day for a few years because we were short bus drivers.
And, and you know, unfortunately, the new person coming into that probably will be doing the same thing that he was having to deal with driving, cause I don't know that our-
We were short on bus drivers.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the nature of the beast of that job. But that is a very, has been a very demanding job, just the nature of dealing with such a vast amount of students who you're coming in contact with all of them, all varying exceptionalities from ESC to the gen ed and, and he was having to. So I don't, I don't have an issue with it. I think that-
Do we need a vote?
Yes, you need to vote.
I'd like to make recommendations-
Oh wait, can you vote? Is that's not an agenda item?
I'll have to amend the agenda.
Can we just agree?
Well, you, you voted a policy saying not to do it, so you probably need to vote the exception to the policy.
Okay, well, at this time, I'm going to amend the agenda to include an item 5.14. And that will be to allow for the funeral Saturday.
That's for a staff member, right?
Yes, Saturday.
I think the exception is just this one funeral. So it would have, either we've got another staff member next week, they got to come back.
Okay.
For this Saturday, February the 11th, at Madison County Central.
Yes.
At Madison County Central for Mr. Ivan Johnson, an employee of the district's. Is there a, is there a motion?
That we allow the funeral to take place at Madison County Central for Ivan Johnson.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, all those in favor of the funeral being held at Madison County Central on Saturday, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the funeral for Mr. Johnson, Saturday, February the 11th, at Madison County Central School.
And we also need to note that the bus drivers, the, the transportation department, they really miss him. I had several workers come out here yesterday and they made bows for each one of the buses. And we've got one on the front door and back on the transportation department. But you should see the black bows on the buses.
That's a nice gesture that they did.
Okay, our next thing, we did have a successful teacher of the year airing. And Ms. Wynden Willis from Greenville Elementary was being chosen as the, as the teacher of the year for Madison County. Okay, next thing, for the high school, they had the regional science fair contest. And Mr. Phyllis sent you out that info, but I just want to read the top winners. The overall winner for the regional science fair for Madison County High School that will be going to compete at the next level is Mr. Arlie Serrano.
Aureli.
Aureli Serrano. And the first runner up was Oscar Sue Perez and Hannah Sparks. And the second runner up was Caitlin Rains. And they had other winners, but these were the top three categories. Also, congratulations goes out to the Madison County High School girls' basketball team. They are the official district champs. They go to the next level, but I can't tell you where. Okay, also at your desk, we've got your invite for the district, annual district SRP luncheon. We're gonna have it at Divine Event so we can social distance. Okay, and that's going to be February 13th at 12:30.
17.
February 17th at 12:30 PM.
Was it 7?
Um, if you're planning on attending, please let Ms. Bishop know so we can, we'll do a head count because we have limited seating. Also, we're reminding everyone, parents, students, this is FTE week. Y'all know what FTE is about, okay? One of the things that was going on that you've charged me with is that we were looking at doing some restructuring of our schools. At your desk, beneath the calendar, the district staff got together and looked at possibly consolidating some of the schools. And within this school packet, we've listed some pros and cons of each situation, mainly of keeping sixth graders at the three outlined schools, keeping the fifth graders from Greenville, and when it becomes sixth grade, letting them attend Greenville Elementary, let the sixth graders attend Pioneer Elementary, and let the sixth graders attend Lee Elementary. And this packet considers some pros and cons. This is something we need to do real quick, but Mr. Alford was at the meeting and he suggested that we have some additional meetings at the community meetings at the schools. And so what I need from you are some possible dates that you are available, because when you meet together, we have to advertise that. We need at least a 48-hour notice. And we, hopefully, we can get this done before next board meeting. Mr. Alford?
Yes, ma'am.
What's going to be the topic of discussion at these meetings?
Well, I think that we need to, for Lee Pioneer and Greenville and Central, which their sixth grade will be staying there. So this, but that's, discussion still could take place. But I feel that we need to discuss the pros and the cons of moving the students back to the sixth grade and then answer any questions that the parents may have at that point. I know at Lee, back a couple months ago, we had something similar to that out there then, where there was quite a few people there and which the, your outlined schools are wanting the sixth graders to come back. So again, I, I just, when, when we have the discussion, Ms. Joseph and I, and it was put for the possibility of even possibly us voting on tonight, I just didn't feel comfortable. I felt that we had made that promise back that we would go back to the schools, and I think we should, to like, hear what they have to say and then decide. And, and keep, and looking at the big picture of what we're dealing with financially and, but, but again, next week, if we could, or maybe, I don't know if we could get any in this week, but maybe next week, if we could get some in, that would be good, because our next meeting would be the 21st. Possibly we make it-
The 21st is a holiday, and so our next meeting will be on the 22nd.
Okay. So-
Possibly Thursday of this week.
I was gonna say Thursday, cause that's 48.
Possibly, we could at some school, if you, we had a school who could do it. And then that would be, we have four total schools. And then when we look at the 7th and 8th, it would need to be like a countywide where we're at, a bigger venue.
We wanted to shoot for doing one on Thursday this week, and maybe one Monday, Wednesday and Thursday next week, because people, a lot of people do church on Wednesday night. And then Ms. Joseph, you can just let us know which school will have us on what day.
Okay, what time?
Do you want to do, I mean, we want to make it conducive for parents who are working.
At least 6 or after.
6 or 6?
6:30, 7?
Well, I don't know 7, because that's getting sort of late, but-
It's kind of dark at 7 o'clock.
It is, it's real dark.
A lot of people get off at 5.
Do you want to do like, maybe-
I would, I would say 6.
I think 6.
Personally, I would think. Everybody, you know, everybody's not going to be off and work, but the majority of them.
So I'm here on schedule one on the 10th, one on the 14th, one on the 15th, and one on the 17th. And schedule all at 6 o'clock.
Right.
Or you could just email or switch school, whatnot.
Okay.
And so then on the 21st, we could vote on-
22.
22, and I, I will put it on the agenda for the, and that's the sixth graders, this is just for the sixth graders.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, only for the sixth, okay.
Cause we can't do the other because until DOE says. Isn't that right?
Y'all said 14?
But no, I thought that they, we had to like, see if we had space and then-
I'm in love.
I'm gonna be nice tonight, Ms. Bell, okay? I'm available on the 14th.
Valentine's, well.
Okay, Ms. Bell brought up something. Ms. Bell has a prior engagement on the 14th. Do we need to meet a little earlier?
we could do it.
I don't, you've got to do it before the 22nd.
We could either do it on Wednesday night or Friday night.
We could do it maybe 5 o'clock on Wednesday.
Okay, we'll try 5 o'clock on Wednesday.
Maybe 5:30 to give people who are working to get off.
Okay.
So we're not doing Valentine's.
Uh, no. That goes on the, what's, that's sweetheart day. Oh, okay.
So, so 5:30 on the 16th.
So it's the 10th, the 15th, 16th, and 17th?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Trevor, you want me to be there?
No, unless, no, I mean-
We're not gonna make any decisions.
We're not gonna vote or anything.
We should.
I wouldn't think you would, but I don't have sense.
We shouldn't have.
Don't get sued.
We shouldn't have a reason to have the attorney there. I don't know that you were with us when we did the door-to-door for the buses about years ago, when we went to all the schools for-
Are you gonna be discussing the 7th and 8th grades when you get to the central school, all of them?
I, I do think just based upon, and you were there that night, based upon the conversation with, at Lee Pioneer and Greenville, they're gonna want to know what their option is. I mean, they're, they're gonna want to know some facts about 7th and 8th.
Okay.
I mean, I, I feel just based upon our previous conversation that was at Lee that night, which anything we said about the sixth graders going there, it circled back to, well, what about in 7th and 8th? It kept circling back to that, so.
If you're not gonna talk about 7th and 8th, there's no need to go to Central, because they've already got their 6th. So that's the only reason you have a meeting at Central.
Well, just as we've had people saying that we've left them out and don't care about them, we're going.
But I mean, you got to talk about 7th and 8th, regardless of what's the point of meeting, you know?
Right. Well-
Cause they've already got their 6th.
Right, they already have their 6th. But again, maybe not the 6th for Central, but for 7th and 8th, for all of it. I mean, they need to be there. Maybe not, I mean, that's a good point about the 6th for them, but-
But it changes then their demographics for sixth grade a little bit, because they're gonna lose all those other sixth graders. And then their 6th will be back basically an elementary grade instead of over with the middle school, you know, not necessarily physically, but.
So, so at that point, Ms. Hill, we would have the, the plan of like, the high school, we could have that with the map.
Did we, did we not have the okay from DOE on the-
She said we could go on and discuss. I thought this was part of the, that was the rationale for us going to central school.
Well, I knew that. Well, no, I just didn't want them to feel left out. We're, we're hearing that we don't care about them and they're being left out. And that's not the case. And I, I don't know why people are saying that, but that's why I said we need to go out there.
But Ms. Brown said we could make it happen. If, if you wanted to make it happen, she could make it happen.
Oh, I was thinking that, I knew we could do sixth grade, but I didn't realize, I thought we had to see if 7th and 8th had, we had the availability and the space.
When we met that day with Ms. Brown for DOE and looked at the number of rooms, space is not really the issue. They're, capacity wise, they have the capacity. So, and, and my only thing is, we need to make a decision by March in order for us to be able to get everything in line curriculum-wise and, and the planning that needs to take place.
So DOE have said that we can move the 7th and 8th grades if we want to?
No, I, I agree with Ms. Hill. It needs to, it needs to be at that point so, so we can plan. So this isn't, so if we were to do it, it would be a success. The, in, in looking at the meeting I had with Ms. Hill and some other district administrators, work has been put into, to segregate in the students as much as we possibly can on the campus to where they're in their sort of bubble of their age, same age peers. The, the one thing to remember, and, and people, I mean, again, I, I'm not saying this is the best idea, but I'm saying this is the only idea that we've had as a board of what we could do to possibly keep students from exiting the district. If anybody has another plan, this is a time for us to hear it. another plan, this is a time for us to hear it. But, but no one has come up with a plan other than saying that this can't work, but we've got to do something to stop the exit of students from the district.
Is it still in place to move the district office to the central school?
Again, I, I think we need to go one step at a time and see where we're at. I mean, we need to see what we're gonna do. I mean, the first step is sixth graders back and then looking to see with seventh and eighth. But again, if, 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 if there's other ideas out there, then this is a time for us to hear it. But, but we haven't heard any others and, and all we're seeing as a board are all of our expenses. Ms. Rose has sent me emails and it's not good news. That's the other thing when it comes to my time that I'm bringing up, that we need to have a workshop to discuss our finances. Um, concerning, it's very concerning over the next few years of what longitudinally is ahead for us. So, but, but again, with, with that being said, um, I, I don't want anybody to think we're just sending kids out there. We're gonna do the best we can if we choose to do that, that people are age grouped as best as we can. However, with that being said, the place they're at right now, if we look on the school improvement plan of the number of students who've been retained more than two years. So theoretically, you could have students who are with pre-K through eighth grade who are two or three years older than what they should be. So again, I, 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 I get, I hear what people are saying. And then the other issue is when they're talking about people of unlike ages being together. Our buses are multi-aged. There's no way our bus transportation, we could go to age-level services. No way that we could afford that. So again, when we start talking about, oh, well, they can't be around people who's not their age, then we need to step back and look at our transportation, our school we're in right now with the number of students who've been retained more than two times that are on campus. Um, just a lot of variables. And, and the overall thing, the number of students who are leaving the district and how that's affecting our FTE.
I personally still thinks it's a bad idea to put seventh and eighth grades at the high school. I think it's just too much. That's just my personal opinion.
Well, well, and again, I respect that, but we need another option.
I know.
We need another option when we're looking at.
But I, I mean, just from, from what I'm seeing, because I got young children. I know what it would be like for them to be at the seventh and, I mean, that, I, just me personally, I just feel like it's just too much to send them to the seventh and eighth, the seventh and eighth grades in the high school.
I, I mean, I, I respect what you're saying, but on the other hand, we need an, we need something, an option that is gonna, is gonna make it where our, our teachers, we can't find teachers, we're having to have at least less than ten eights in a class. That, that's unheard of. That's unheard of. So I, I don't know, but I, I do think we need to have this discussion and, and we do probably need the information concerning the high school because based on the, the meeting at Lee, it constantly circles back to what's our option. If we don't have an option, then we're withdrawing and being put on a waiting list at one of the charters. What's our option? So that's, that's, and again, if anyone else has a better idea, this is a time to.
I don't have a better idea about that.
But then we, we'll have the parents that are sending our kids to, to the high school that is seventh grade. They may put their kids on the list for the charter.
Right. Yeah.
So.
They, they, they could, but, but they can't.
It, it, it could go either way.
It could. It could.
Because you know, if they don't want their young babies out there to the high school, I will put my babies on the list for the charter. But I'm just saying, we just gotta look at it in all the angles, the whole picture.
Right.
Well, we, I've looked at the whole picture and I think Mr. Alfred has to.
I, but I, but to my, but we, we're also got to consider that the babies are going to the high school. The babies are going to the high school. We're taking little kids and sending them to the high school amongst grown folks.
Okay.
And you're saying, don't look at age, but we gotta look at age. We got to.
Well, well, there, there's seventh graders and, and, and the thing about it is, schools around us do it right now. So it's not like we're creating something new here. This is throughout the state. You have seven through twelve configurations throughout the state. One just down the road, Lafayette High School has seven through twelve. Jefferson has K through twelve under one roof. I mean, on the same campus.
I think it's also the demographics of the school, how you could keep them separated.
Well.
And I taught in a school.
Oh, are we gonna have this discussion at our meetings when we go?
Yes, yes, we're, I mean, again.
I ju, I just wanna hear what folks have to say about it.
That's why we're going to the community meetings.
I just wanna hear. I wanna hear what folks have to say about it.
And, and they're.
And I wanna, I, because I, I, I have yet, I have yet to meet one parent, and I've talked to a lot of them, one that, that is for sending their kid to the, to the high school.
And I've talked many years. I haven't, I haven't met one yet either.
Well.
Now, now, I, I'm, you know, I don't go all over the world and talk, but I have not met one in my area yet.
All I'm saying is, all I'm saying.
I understand about the money.
And, and looking at, and looking at the big picture, not just some money.
Well, I understand about kids leaving and teaching.
And making academic gains. Again, if, if we don't do this, then someone needs to come up with a different plan or we need to be positioned to make significant cuts.
The money is very important. We have to stay within those borders. But to me, the safety of our children are the top priority.
Well, when you, when you went to Mayo, was there a problem with safety down there?
But, but, the only thing about Mayo, it was built for that.
It's built differently. It's just.
Our high school was built for that. I don't think.
Again, um, this, we, we should wait.
But I'd like to just, I'd like to know what folks say.
We should wait to hear what people say.
Yes.
And, and if people don't want to do it, then we need to be prepared to make cuts. As unpainful as, as painful as that will be, we just need to be prepared to make cuts. If people don't want to do that, again, based on Ms. Rainick's figures of what we're anticipating, let me just read it off of what this past year has been, of what we're short. And it's significant. It's sh, it's significant. And again, um, but again, we, we can't keep going at this trajectory or we're gonna be in the same state we were in a few years ago. And, and I don't want to go through that again. And I don't know any other board member who was here at that time wants to go through that. But, but it was.
Mr. Alfred, how are we gonna make cut, why are we playing cuts and we already short? We got ten paraprofessionals teaching in classroom. Why would we make cuts?
Because we're so, if our, if we're so low in money, we can't pay them. They not gonna come to work.
Well, you're gonna need, we're gonna need people to teach school.
But you got to pay them.
We got to pay them, but right now we have ten paraprofessionals teaching classroom and we still short of teachers. Why would we have to cut?
But, but again, you're, you're, you're not gonna get your, you're not gonna get your gains from teachers.
We're short with bus drivers. We're going to go and listen to what the community members want to say.
Right. But yeah, but I just wanna, I just wanna apprise, this is just a few of the, of the, in categoricals that we were, we were down. Um, safe schools, we were um, short a hundred and seventy-three thousand. Um, let's go to transportation. Transportation, we were short seven hundred and sixty-three thousand. Again, a few of those shortages, we're now at a million dollars. That's a percent of our fund balance. In, in a million a percent? So, so again, and, and this is a whole list. And again, Ms. Rainick, if you would send out to all the board members this list of.
I, I don't like the idea of sending it out. I think we need to have a meeting in person. The thing about sending out, some people don't read send-out stuff.
That'll be fine. I mean, I mean, the next.
Ms. Rainick, I would like to receive it so I could go over it and study it and before I get back to my board.
We can, we can put it on, we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting. We can put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Or should we do the workshop before the next meeting?
When you have another time?
Well, no, that day, that day.
Oh. I just want to know where you, uh.
Well, I know, we're running out of days.
Come up with another date.
On, on the twenty-second.
I was about to say, I, I think you're gonna have all you can say, Grace, over on these meetings before the twenty-second. I, I don't think I'd add them to that. And you can always put it on.
We could, we could maybe do it um, on the twenty-second meeting and then after that, we can, after we see it and like digest it and then we could have a workshop over it.
And the reason why I say that, I met with Ms. Rainick, and when you sit down with a person face-to-face and they show you all the facts and figures, it makes a difference.
And at the very top of that.
Rather than her sending me a bunch of papers and I'm gonna digest it. Okay, still.
And at the very top of that paper, children's safety first.
And, and you know what?
That's what we need to be looking at.
No one on this board has ever, ever not been for safety.
Never.
Back, a- again, I, I, I'm not even gonna get started on that tonight about the safety issue because if I remember right, this board or some of the people on this board stood up for safety a few years ago of children. So, so again, we're, I'm not, I'm not getting into that, but I would like it put on the agenda, Ms. Joseph or Ms. Bishop, on the twenty-second for the list of um, of categoricals of what was presented or what I've seen. Um, so Ms. Rainick can go over it with us and then we can have a workshop after um, concerning the issue.
You wanna have the discussion before the workshop?
Um, just for, just for people to see maybe, or what do you advise, Ms. Reeves?
Um, I, I would think you'd have on the twenty-second, um, have Ms. Rainick explain it to you. Um, the, the point I would think of the workshop is looking at things to, for you to correct.
To, to make the corrections.
But she's got to introduce it.
Right.
And I think there'd also be an advantage to the public.
Yes.
Seeing all of this and, and understanding what you guys are facing.
We just, we share it with the union. We share.
Would, would that be okay, Ms. Rainick, on the twenty-second?
Just have the regular meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Do you remember the total, Ms. Rainick, before we're short?
We're gonna put sixth graders on the agenda and, uh, seventh graders on the gen, seventh and eighth graders on the agenda also. We can have the separate items.
But, but we would not have been able to do the seventh and eighth at that point, would we?
Are you gonna talk with everybody? I'm scheduling for everyone but the high school. Okay, I'm just trying to find out what do you want on the agenda.
Sixth for sure. I don't know that seventh and eighth at that point. What do you think, Mr. Reeves?
Um, I, I think you're gonna, I, regardless of which way you do it, you're gonna have a hard time discussing the sixth grader stay at schools.
Right, right.
And not discussing the seventh and eighth, including the high school.
It circles back to it.
It's been very frustrating for, for parents to show up and you're talking about some of it, not all of it.
Right, right.
Now, and, and I think that's gonna apply regardless of the way y'all ultimately decide. I would, on, on those four meetings, I'd discuss the whole thing. Get everybody's attention, lay it all out at one time, and then y'all come back, vote, decide what you wanna do and kind of, you know, get it done.
One idea now, I think Mrs. Hill and maybe Mr. Alfred and Mrs. Shirley met with the DOE. But now, we had, the board didn't meet with the DOE.
I just was on a conference call.
So I don't know if, you know, there's something that was said that we should know about or?
I was quarantined and unable to be there, but the, the DOE was just here saying if we could do it. I mean, that's what.
Basically, was that just giving us, okay. In other words, it wasn't, okay.
They were here.
DOE is not gonna give you advice on whether to do it.
No, just, but they have to give us their blessing.
They're, they're gonna say whether or not they'll allow.
Right.
Sixth grade, we could have done, I think, without, I mean, they, they came to look at the space for seventh and eighth. Um, sixth grade is still considered elementary and we would have had the issue with, able to do it with, with sixth grade. But no, she just came for.
She's still, yeah.
And I was, I was just participated initially by phone and then I exited the call, but um, it was here to see if we had the space for it.
So can I, can I clarify then? So on the twenty-second, at the meeting, you want me to present some of these items?
Yes, ma'am.
And we'll have a workshop afterwards.
To see how we can.
But there's some board members that would like it ahead of time.
Well, it, it would go in our, it would go in our packet. The numbers would.
Okay.
It would go in the packet and.
I don't think there's any disadvantage there. Ms. Rainick, go ahead and email it to everybody tomorrow.
Right.
No, no, that would be fine.
And then, you know, y'all can have a look at it. Then it also goes in the packet.
Right. And I just want to say I have an open door. So if, if we have any questions before then, you can certainly.
And, and the workshop would see like Ms. Reeves said of ways to make where, say for instance, pre-K wasn't over or short sixty thousand dollars or this fund not short this amount of money, where we could problem solve of with transportation, maybe what could we do where it's not three-quarters of a million dollars short? Um, that's, that's a significant.
It's gonna be even shorter because we just got the third calculation. It went from five hundred and forty thousand, the third calculation's at five hundred and ten thousand. So it went down thirty thousand between the two calculations.
For transportation.
Transportation.
Is that from, is that, that's not from FTE though, is it?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and it's FTE week. So we encourage everybody to drive the buses and we encourage everybody to meet at the schools.
Sounds wise.
Pardon me?
No.
Yeah. Even if they drive, if they normally drive to school, they should try and drive the bus at least once so that we can get the transportation dollars to support the rest.
Um, but do you, do you unders, I mean, you're, it's clear?
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you for your help with that. Because I, I don't want the other board members to not know what, what I've known for a little while. And I mean, it's alarming when you look at it and you see that, that path of like us being short. I mean, we, we have the somewhat money to support it at this point, but with minimum wage going up, I mean, that's a whole nother can of worms that when you look at that over the next five years, that is, that's a lot of money that.
Three million dollars.
That, that we're not being, getting money from the state to add to that to make it more. I mean, we're just having to absorb that as a district. So looking at all of it, it's a, it's a, it's, it's a lot of money.
Something that we did for the principals or probably what to do with the team is we went over the FTE and we showed the impact of, of FTE and the numbers of students and what the longitudinal landscape is. And I think I shared that with. Yes, yes, you did. I think that that might be something the board would be interested in seeing, to see how we've gone from twenty-eight hundred students down to twenty-three hundred and above.
It's decline in enrollment. I mean, it has been since.
Do we get paid for every kid that rides a bus?
You get paid.
Pardon?
No.
Oh.
You get paid, yeah.
Number one, it depends upon the school you attend at the distance you, you live from that school. Basically, if you live within two miles of a, your school site that you go, then you're not getting paid for that. That's a saying and that's not a, that's not a, but.
I know, I know.
If you're pre-K, you can prepay, you're not getting paid much.
Then maybe looking at changing that.
What about, what about, I know we haul the charter school kids. We get paid for them?
We get paid from the charter for the students that we haul, but we don't get.
We don't get no FTE?
Pardon me?
We don't get an FTE for them?
The FTE flows through the district and then we have to pass the money back to them. And then we charge them for the use of the transportation for their children. But we're talking about other options like that. So all the money for all of the charters, all their FTE, everything flows to the district. And then it passes through and it goes that way.
We get FTE for transportation, but uh, the funds that we get from the state for, for transportation does not cover the cost of transportation.
Has it always been this way or is it?
Yes, because we have a lot of complimentary pickups, okay? If they're less than two miles from the school, we, uh, the state is not gonna pay you to pick them up. But because of safety, we're gonna pick those kids up.
I agree. Well, that's actually perp law too.
That's it, that's it.
No, no, that's not roads. It's, it's how you throw a rock over there.
So all the students say um, living in the condos or apartments next to Lake Park Nursing Center probably would not be paid.
None.
We don't get paid.
To go out to Central High School, the ones that, the kids that live behind Windex and stuff, that, they wouldn't.
And I want to say in this legislature, there was, where it may go down to a mile or.
That's what I heard.
There's a, there's a.
Yeah.
But it's not a little fund.
But still will depend on the student's safety because if a student is at risk, we're gonna pick them up.
There's no way students could walk to Central, Panetta, Lee, or Greenville.
Right. And we tried to get that unsafe condition so that we could get paid. And because there's a sidewalk on the side of the road, we couldn't, we couldn't.
At any of our schools, there's no way that it would be safe for, even at Lee and Panetta or Greenville, it wouldn't be safe for anybody to walk anywhere. So.
This is not a condition of just Madison County.
Right, right. I mean, and that's probably a categorical that is short across the state, every district, just based on your diesel going up. I mean, that drives it, and gas prices and diesel aren't going down. It's not going down, or had been. So, Ms. Joseph, if you could set the dates...
Okay.
Or the, the places and the times, and just tell us where we need to be.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Rainick is gonna present on the twenty-second, which is our board meeting.
Right.
All right, now, do we need to set a date to get together, to have a workshop, like you mentioned?
We can that night.
Oh, set that night, okay.
I mean, I would rather to wait that night, and then maybe the dust has settled with all these other places we're going to see.
Because I...
Just to confirm, on the tenth, they want to set up and schedule a meeting, on the fifteenth, on the sixteenth at five-thirty, and on the seventeenth, I'm setting up, uh, I will schedule a meeting those days. I'm not gonna schedule a meeting on the fourteenth.
What a hard time that day.
And I'm not gonna schedule a meeting on a Friday.
Okay.
No, uh, we're gonna schedule...
And a day subsequent, that they, and they will set that day on the twenty-second. This is what they just said.
Yeah. Okay, um, that's all concerning the, to the outlined schools and for, um, the seventh and eighth at this time.
That's all I have, Ms. Rainick.
That's all you have, okay? Uh, Mr. Reeves?
Um, one thing, we had a hearing on the Rite of Passage case, we moved, they, uh, their complaint had two counts, we moved to dismiss one of the counts of solid immunity. Uh, the judge granted the motion and dismissed one of their counts. Uh, they still have a breach of contract count, um, and so that, that case will be moving forward. Uh, they have not, would not agree to a, um, uh, any sort of settlement, uh, previous to that hearing. We've tried mediation, we're not able to get anywhere, uh, so we are moving forward on the case.
So one has been dismissed, I mean, one has been dismissed.
One count, they, they had pled one breach of contract, and they had planned, pled one count called an account stated, which is a, a cause of action that's probably not appropriate, it's a governmental entity, it's a solid immunity. That, that's what, and the judge agreed with us that it wasn't, but now that, you know, breach of contract, if we lost breach of contract, that still results in having to pay money if not...
They're saying we breached the contract based upon...
Yeah, well, the, the, everybody agrees there's a contract, everybody agrees they perform services, everybody agrees they, they were paid some money. They're saying they, they owed more money than we paid them, we're saying they're actually owed less than we paid them, and they owe us some back, and the, it, it's a complicated case, but it, it kind of turns around the way FTE is reimbursed from the state.
Right.
And so that's what we're, what we're doing.
Okay, um, is that all?
That's all I have, Ms. Reeves.
Okay, Mr. Carroll?
Well, I quick, I, I thank y'all for coming and speaking tonight, and ladies have spoke. Um, I just wanna, um, send condolences to Ivan's family. He served our kids here a long time, done a great job, don't be missed. And then the Cowgirls basketball team, congratulate them on their district tournament, and, uh, good luck in the playoffs. Ms. Willis, Teacher of the Year, and then all the Teachers of the Year in their areas, I'd like to congratulate them. And all the winners in the, what was that, the science fair?
Science fair.
All the winners in the science fair. That's all.
Okay, Ms. Bell?
Um, I would like to say congratulations to the Madison County Cowgirls, um, for becoming district champs. I'd like to say congratulations to the school related, um, and the Teachers of the Year employees, job well done. Um, I wanna congratulate the science winners also, and my heart goes out to the family of Ivan Johnson. Ivan Johnson was a friend of mine, he was hardworking, I thank him for his service. Job well done, Ivan, job well done.
Okay, um, Ms. Gibson?
Yes, I had the pleasure of going to Tallahassee for two days for legislative days this week, and we, I became more familiar with the bills that are going, working its way through, through the process. Um, we talked to our senator, we also got with Representative Schoff's staff member, he was, Mr. Schoff was in, uh, some meetings. Um, I'd like to also remember Ivan, he was a very dedicated employee, I was, I've been an employee for many years with the Madison County School System, and I'm familiar, got to know him in a way. Congratulations to the science fair winners, um, the girls' basketball, and, and I'd like to say something about the employee, the janitors at Central. I wanna thank them, because after the basketball game the other night, I just sat there and waited, and what I saw when everyone vacated was a disaster. The garbage, I, I, I can't even describe the condition of the gym. Now, I know, and maybe Ms. Hill, you know, or Ms. Joseph, they spent hours cleaning that up. It was a disaster. I, I, I just couldn't believe it, there was cheese all over the place, a complete disaster. And you don't see it when the people are in the bleachers, but when they leave, you see it. So thank you, my hat is off to you. Uh, Ms. Willis, I have the pleasure of going into her class every month, and I've gotten to know Ms. Willis, and I'm very happy that she's, and I wanna congratulate the other Teachers of the Year also, and the SRPs. I'd like to thank Ms. Rainick, cause Ms. Rainick, I, you've gave me a good education, and I appreciate that. And like I say, it's one thing to send it out, now I'm speaking out of my own experience, but to sit down with someone, and Ms. Hill, whenever I've done it, you've given me a good education, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, um, Ms. Williamson?
I just wanna say that I wanted to thank everybody in their role, and tell them how much I appreciate them in whatever role they have to keep this school system going.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, I too would like to send my condolences to the family of Mr. Johnson, um, he was a valued employee for years here within the district. Um, I didn't realize till tonight that he went back as far as he did to the dr, or to Supervisor of Transportation. Um, Ms. Gibson and I went to the day in the legislature, two days, um, last Wednesday and Thursday to Tallahassee with the Florida School Board Association. We did, um, have a chance to, um, speak with Senator Osley, um, and meet with Jason Schoff's assistant, um, that was a nice meeting with both, um, both of the legislatures. Um, I'd like to congratulate the, um, Madison County High School Girls Basketball Team. I'd like to congratulate, um, the SRPs, um, within the district, the SRP of the Year will be told in the near future. Heather Atwell, Roderick Williams, Dominique Irvine, Margaret Davis, um, Taliyah Solomon, Gerald Latimer, Michelle Carter, Leroy James, and Bobby Tompkins. Um, wanna congratulate, um, the Teachers of the Year, and thank the foundation. Um, boy, without the foundation, we would be not being able to do a lot of the things we do, um, for the teachers within the district. The Teacher of the Year banquet, although it was virtual, um, some of the teachers are, I assume the foundation has given signs for the teachers to have in their yard saying that, um, the two thousand and twenty-two Teacher of the Year for, say, Panetta Elementary School lives here and has her picture, and it's a really nice, um, thing that they have throughout the yards of the teachers. Um, I wanna thank the, or congratulate the teachers real quick, um, Ms. Wood at the high school, Ms. Prairie at Creative Arts, Ms. Willis, um, at Greenville, and she was our district winner, Ms. Starling at James Madison, uh, Ms. Lee at, um, Panetta, Ms. Gurley at Lee, Amanda, Ms. Willoughby at Central, Mr. Repova at Central, and Ms. Gillian at, um, Waypoint. I wanna congratulate all the teachers, um, it's, it's a hard job, and I just appreciate them being willing to do it. Um, congratulate the science fair winners within the district, and, um, I too wanna congratulate, or not congratulate, thank Ms. Rainick, not congratulate her, but thank her for...
Congratulations, Ms. Rainick.
For, for all of her work. Um, she is very detailed and very, um, like wanting us to have information, and that's such a breath of fresh air, where, where, like, you're, like, giving us information and wanting us to have it, and just very detailed, the whole work with the regions, with the bank card we went through, just all that, going over and over all that, I just appreciate that, and appreciate the list you sent me back a few weeks ago, the shortages, so we know, and we're not blindsided by it. I wanna thank Ms. Hill for the eye ready and all her work with that, and just trying to move the kids forward, it's so, um, overwhelming sometimes, but I guess you just have to keep your eye on what we can move forward and not get bogged down in the weeds of what we have, like, not moving. Um, and thank Ms. Joseph for all her work with the, um, with the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, cause it is something that, no matter how you feel about it, we can't, we can't sit back and do nothing, we have to do something, that somewhere, we have to do something, and I appreciate her work, her attention, um, she may not agree with